We will call the May 2nd regular meeting of the Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury to order. We ask that you please silence your cell phone and please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation.
Most gracious and holy Father, we just thank you. We thank you for this gathering. We thank you for this meeting. Father, we pray your blessings on this meeting, Heavenly Father, and that every decision we make will be pleasing in your sight. Now, Father God, we also pray a special blessing for the family of Mr. Tony Tremonti. Bless his family, bless his wife and children, Heavenly Father. We give you the honor, the glory, and the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
I'm tired.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pond.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Burley.
Here.
Ms. Eason.
Here.
Mr. Hillary was unable to attend. Mr. Hayes.
Here.
Mr. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Markantown.
Here.
Mr. Quinn.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Snell.
Here.
President Barkey.
Here.
And you do have a call.
All right, thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda and on behalf of the police jury, I want to take a minute to send condolences to the family of our colleague, Mr. Tony Tremonti. We lost a dear friend and public servant this week, and our hearts are saddened. Tony's funeral will be held on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. at Johnson's Funeral Home on Lake Street. My colleagues and I will be attending, and we will recognize Tony for his service at an upcoming police jury meeting. Please keep his family in your prayers. Thank you. One A, recognition of retirement of Mr. Richard Dick Gremion, Senior Director of Office of Homeland Security. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, President Barkey and members of the police jury.
I am pleased tonight to join the police jury recognizing Dick Gremion for his distinguished career with Calqueshoe Parish. Dick is retiring after 31 years of dedicated service. I want to give a little background and go over a few accomplishments, because there's a lot there. And I know you can't cover everything, so I'll hit some highlights. But Dick came to the police jury back in April of 1993 after being in the insurance business claims adjuster. And he told us at our staff meeting, they kind of a little more history of that filled us in, and I always learn something new, but it was fortuitous because we didn't have an insurance program, or now it's risk management, and he started that from the ground up. And the structures Dick put in place at that time, which goes back 31 years now, ultimately led to a much more effective risk management program, which has evolved and continues to this day to pay benefits. But it all started with him. And actually, for the first three years, he wasn't OEP Director, now it's OSEP, Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness. Back then, it was just OEP. And in addition to the, on the insurance side, we unfortunately, we had a passing of the Personnel Manager at the time, Jim Allen, and Mark McMurray, who had hired Dick, my predecessor. Said, "Dick, did you have any human resources training when you were in the insurance business?" Dick said, "Why? We need an HR Director for..." So he wore both hats. He didn't switch. Dick really is a jack-of-all-trades out of necessity. So he did that the first three years, and then in 1996, what I think most of us have known Dick and his role to be is when all of that started. He was appointed Director of the Office of Emergency Preparedness in 96, and he certainly found his groove. He's been doing it ever since. Dick has many accomplishments. I just want to hit a few. It won't surprise any of you. I'll start with his leadership during natural disasters, especially hurricanes. There's nothing, I actually started out in OEP my first year here. You can do all the training in the world, but at the end of the day, you need leadership during something that's bigger than any one of us, and that's what the hurricanes test you. In a retirement ceremony held at the Emergency Operations Center just last week, one of the guests recalled how Dick, after spending time assisting with disaster response down in New Orleans for Katrina, which hit in August of '05, said, "We could not have that same situation here." Now, Dick, and none of us knew, three, three and a half weeks later, we'd get hit with Rita, but it didn't take him that long to work with us and municipalities and others for a lot of the plan, but one was transportation for those without vehicles. I know most or all of you remember one of the haunting photos from Katrina was this long line of school buses ready to evacuate everybody, but they were under feet of water, and they couldn't do it. And so, in three short weeks, as it turns out, under Dick's leadership, a plan was developed, and I believe Dick, I hope I'm close on this, I think as many as 3,000 or more people were able to be evacuated out of the area when Rita was threatening that wouldn't have been able to leave otherwise and would have been abandoned. And that was because he saw the vision and said, "We better learn from Katrina." And then after the storm, and keep in mind, it had been 47, 48 years since a hurricane had hit here, Audrey. So again, we were all prepping, but you never know till it hits, and he had a big load to handle, and he did it well. And then in 2008, it's not talked about as much now, but it was a true hurricane, Hurricane Ike. For those of you who may be or spent a lot of time in Cameron Parish, they certainly remember it. That wasn't a big wind event, but it was a flooding event. Again, we learned from Rita and everything before that. Of course, nothing quite compares to the devastation that was Hurricane Laura, which is a lot more recent, bigger and more impactful, but all of us learned more, and I think we were a lot more effective because of it. But again, that's what OEP Directors do. They are by state law assigned to that role, and Dick had to do that again, and he had the experience. We are fortunate to have Dick at the helm because not only his experience, but Dick will tell you, and he'll probably get a chance in a few minutes, I think he would tell you the key to success that we do have is the relationships you build throughout the years. You can't ask, you know, dozens of agencies in a matter of a few days to all work together in something like a hurricane, and he built those relationships. Local responders, Governor's Office of Homeland Security, FEMA. Dick's very tied into the National Hurricane Center folks, and I mean, one-on-one relationships with those folks there and many others, non-governmental organizations. And that paid off in ways you don't really see, but we know that it's there. And Dick's leadership's been displayed a lot more than in hurricanes, unfortunately, and y'all know, we've had floods, ice storms, chemical release incidents over the last 30 years, a pandemic, and then one I didn't think we'd ever see, and Borogor got the worst of it, wildfires. But we were very active in that. Him and his whole staff, by the way, I'm so glad his staff are here because Dick, his leadership allowed all of them to do what they do best. Dick has a great deal to be proud of and reflecting on his career, and one of the things I know he's most proud of is his staff. Over the years, he's mentored and coached a great many people who were special to him, and they were and are enriched by that experience. I think that's probably the most important thing to him. On a personal level, I've been a fan of Dick Gremion for a long time. I met him when I interned here. So I started, I was an intern in the summer of 1994, so he'd been here about a year. Mark McMurray assigned me several things, but one of them was put me under Dick. We were working at the time on the needing to upgrade our parish ordinances that involved boat safety and signage. You had people, you know, going down the river a little too fast and didn't worry about how it affected those people living there. And what I loved about working under Dick, he gave me a lot to do. He let me run with it, and he was gracious with his time and patient with all my questions. And I do ask a lot of questions, but I have fond memories of that, and of course, I came back full-time, and Dick's been great ever since. As I wrap my comments up, though, I think the highest compliment I can pay Dick is that the public trusts him. They trust him. Now, y'all know better than most, that is of great value in an era where public officials at all levels come under such criticism, and he is a public official, and he's the face of our area, not only here but nationwide, when things happen. And Dick has a gift of communicating with the larger public in a way that comforts them when comfort is needed, but he also shoots straight about what we're up against when disasters threaten us. And not just what he says when he's communicating, it's his tone, and it gives people at the same time a feeling that we're going to be okay, but you better take this seriously. And not everybody can do that, but that's been his strength. People appreciate that honesty, and all of our emergency preparedness and response efforts would not be near as effective without the leadership and compassion of Dick Gremion. So Dick, at this point, we're going to have, I'm going to give you a chance to speak later, but I do want to present the certificate, so if you can come on up now, this is the official part, because he is retiring. We'll get pictures in a few minutes. We'll get back with Anthony. I'll read this out to you and give it to you, and we'll ask you to sit down because we got one other, maybe more, but I want to present this to you. This second day of May 2024 to Richard Dick Gremion, Director of Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, in recognition and appreciation for 31 years of service to the citizens of Calqueshoe Parish. Congratulations and best wishes on your retirement.
Thank you, Brian.
We don't always, this next introduction I'm going to make, Dick, I don't know if this has happened before, but while they're in session, no less, we've got members of the legislative delegation here, and they're not only here to be here to congratulate you, they have something they want to present to you, and I believe Representative Les Farnham is going to represent the delegation. Is that correct? Les, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's good to be back in front of you guys. I used to occupy one of the chairs for about 12 years, and it's a lot better on this side. So I want to give a little history. I was fortunate enough to be on the jury for 12 years and watch Dick in action and get to experience and be witness to some of his leadership capabilities. My first year on the jury was 2008. As Brian alluded to, we had a pretty difficult year that year with a storm that caused severe flooding, especially for the channel and up the Sabine River. We had a lot of challenges that year, and Dick handled that. You know, drinking from the fire hose your first year here and get to see all of that in action was difficult and pleasure all at the same time. Got to learn a lot in the very first year. I kind of put Dick's words, when Dick gets up to the podium to talk, he's kind of like E.F. Hutton. Everybody stops and shuts up and listens to what he has to say, because it's usually pretty important stuff at the time. We have a concurrent resolution from the House and the Senate authored by Senator Stein, Abraham, Reese, and Representatives Boreak, Carrier, Carter, Farnham, Guiman, Romero, and Tarver. It is kind of odd that we are in session during this time. I don't know if it's a very timely retirement that it's about one month before hurricane season starts. So good planning. So the resolution goes to commend and congratulate Richard Dick Gremion, Director of Calqueshoe Parish Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness on the occasion of his retirement. Whereas Dick Gremion, a native of Alexandria, Louisiana, has been a resident of Lake Charles since 1989, residing with his wife, Felu, retired district supervisor for the Louisiana Office of Vocation and Rehabilitation, as well as their children, Richard Jr. and Andy. Whereas Mr. Gremion, education journey, graduating from Alexandria Senior High School in 1972, earning a BS in Business Administration from Northwest State University in 1976, laying a strong foundation for his career in emergency management and risk management. I'll skip through some of the accolades that Brian alluded to earlier, and we'll go on down to where. Whereas the addition of his regular duties in 1999, Mr. Gremion was also named Director of Calqueshoe Emergency Response Fire Training Center, which provided emergency responders nationally-recognized certification in fire rescue and hazardous materials training. And whereas Mr. Gremion's tenure with the Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury since 1993 has been marked by unwavering dedication, leadership, and innovation in enhancing emergency preparedness and response capabilities, earning him the respect and admiration of his colleagues and constituents alike. And whereas after nearly 50-year career, Dick Gremion is retiring and spending more time with his family. Therefore, be it resolved that the Louisiana Legislature does hereby commend and congratulate Richard Dick Gremion, Senior Director of the Calqueshoe Parish Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness on the occasion of his well-deserved retirement, and wishing him only the best in the next chapter of his life. Signed by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House and Representative. So congratulations.
And now we'll have comments by Mr. Gremion. It's your hour, sir.
Dick Gremion, 10:15 p.m. After, Brian had pages of notes after that. I'm not sure I can say anything more. There may have been a couple of things he left out. It's been 31 years since I started work here, almost last week. It's just hard to believe that 30 years can pass by in the blink of an eye, and that's what's happened here. It turned out that I'm one of those people who, this job perfectly suited for me. It's exciting, it teases your brain, makes you think about things, makes you learn how to get along with people, get them on your team. Very important. Before I go too much further, I'd like to introduce my family and some of my staff. My wife, my wife of 41 years, is that right? Proof that marriage is not fatal. My son, Andy, and his fiancee, Courtney, and our granddaughter, Towns. Adele, our friend from Arizona, originally from Bellingham, Washington. She's here visiting this week. And what I'd like to do is have my staff just one by one stand up and say who they are and what they do.
Jared B., Assistant Director, Calqueshoe Parish, OSEP.
Erica Fontenot, Operations Manager, Calqueshoe Parish, OSEP.
Mark Ferguson, Emergency Response Specialist, Calqueshoe, OSEP.
Jason Lombard, Emergency Response Specialist, Calqueshoe, OSEP.
Kevin Thomas, Emergency Response Specialist, Calqueshoe, OSEP.
Billy Summers, Emergency Response Technician, Calqueshoe, OSEP.
Patience Frederick, Emergency Management Intern, Calqueshoe Parish, OSEP.
Tanya Busson, Under Senior Accounts Supporting Specialist, Calqueshoe.
Megan Powell, Administrative Support Specialist.
So this is who does all the work. I get the fun part, and they get to fill in the blanks. But we have a great staff. A lot of you I know have worked with many of them, and they're really, you know, they're going to carry on whatever work that I had there, they're going to carry that on, and I'm sure even do a better job than what I did. Like I said, the job here has allowed me to do, see things that people can only dream about. I've met two Presidents, one twice, George H.W. Bush and President Trump twice, came to Lake Charles and met him twice. Some of those things, you watch it on TV. I mean, I've talked to the Weather Channel, every network you can think of. Tom booked me, you know, three deep or five deep sometimes. What's funny is, you're in that instance, and you're thinking, okay, this stuff only happens on television, and you say, wait a minute, I am on television. So, you know, I just took, didn't really have any formal training in media relations, but I just took it as part of my job and rolled right in with it. It's worked out well for me. By the way, Mr. Lewis probably would tell you that my wife is the smarter of our partnership. They have been friends for years. So anyway, you know, I don't know what else to say. I think that you're in good hands with things that are coming up. We have been real busy. I would like to say, we look back and over the past, since 1996, we've had 25 presidential disasters. Now, Mark said the other day that he thought maybe I was the reason that that came, because we went for almost 50 years without a hurricane. But for a jurisdiction this size, they would be lucky to have three of those in a lifetime. And here we are, we're averaging one a year. That's not a good thing, and I'm hoping that things calm back down. Maybe we can have another 50 years like with Hurricane Audrey, so that we don't have to use all of this knowledge and things that we've talked about here tonight. So with that, that's my comments, and I appreciate, you know, we've had a lot of nice compliments. And as Brian said, the thing that I'm most proud of is that a lot of people who have spoken to over the last few days told me that I was a mentor for them. That probably means more to me than anything that I've done since I've been here, because you're spreading the word, you're spreading the knowledge, you know, that we worked so hard to get. So that's what I've got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you to your wife and your family first, for sharing with the people of this parish, for you to be able to do this job, because there's no doubt, you spend a lot of hours down here and a lot of time away from them, but you've done an outstanding job, and you've got a lot to be proud of. We all, we hate to see you go, but you deserve this retirement, and I hope you all enjoy yourself and get to relax a little bit. And like you said, I think you've got a good team, and you're going to leave us in good hands. Thank you, Dick.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. Barris.
Thank you. Well, we got to know each other pretty quick right off the bat of my first term, but, you know, Brian said, he mentioned, you know, your temperament, the way that you presented. A lot of people took their cues consciously or subconsciously from the way you were reacting. It was kind of like the old days when, you know, people my age are better, nine o'clock, Paul Harvey came on, everything stopped. Well, when stuff got bad, when Dick come on, everybody stopped. And if they were anxious or scared or whatever, I honestly think by hearing you and watching and taking your body language, all of those things really went into that. And I know that, you said you didn't have training to do that. You can't teach that. So the intangibles, and as far as your department, one word I can really sum it up with is legacy. I think you'll leave that, not just a guy who worked there. And I think you had an effect on more people than you know, and rightfully so. So have a good retirement, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Barris. Mr. Hayes.
Well, Mr. Gremion and I kind of started the same profession at about the same time. I started with the school board as their risk manager in 99, and I remember attending the first alert meeting or whatever you wanted to call it, when you shared the information with us in law enforcement about what was coming. I can remember looking at you at one of those meetings, and when I turned around, Kathleen Blanco, who was then the governor of the state of Louisiana, was walking by applying her makeup, putting the makeup on, and we were having a storm coming in about an hour later. That's something that she had a problem living down from that point on, by the way. Another- Another thing that I remember about you, Dick, is interestingly enough, when Katrina came ashore, until those levees broke, it wasn't that big a storm. We had school that day, in fact. Then when the levees broke, and I'm watching television, and I'm, you know, I'm feeling all comfortable, and then cable TV came across with a story, and you literally watched, watched part of New Orleans being washed away. And, you know, we dealt with that, talked about that. But I knew I'd found the right profession, and I was in good hands, when Hal McMillan stood up in front of God and everybody and said, "I have President Bush's phone number in my pocket." I knew I was in trouble then, if he was running the country. Anyway, it was a pleasure working with you. You're a credit to the profession. A lot of folks in here don't realize the stress that comes along with that job particularly. Every, everything that could mess up eventually wound up on your desk, whether it was a wreck, a storm, happenstance that we'd never dealt with before, but all of a sudden, we were facing them, the issue, and had to plan a response for your team, for the parish, for all of us. You're a credit to the profession, buddy. I hope you have a wonderful retirement. It's something I found out I'm really good at.
Mr. Andropon.
Yeah, Dick, we go way back too. And from the professional side, from industrial emergency response and police jury, and the school board as well. But one thing that everybody touched on is your demeanor, and the trust that the public and the industrial side that we have with you and your department. But it's your calmness, the sense of calmness that you have, and people feel that and see that. And I think when everybody's talking about how everybody listens, it transcends that. And I've enjoyed working with you over the years in those various settings. And I wish you all the best. You've earned it.
Thank you, Mr. Andropon.
Mr. Stelly.
Every time I'd call you, you always return my call, not necessarily with good news, but you always return my call. And I remember the time in Rita I had the opportunity to go into the Command Center when all of this stuff was going on. It was a very, very scary situation for me, because I have family here, and all the people I represent, and all the people you represent. And I appreciate what you did, and how you did it, and your staff at the time did a great job. We also went through, I can goose doll together. I just unfortunately had the opportunity to be the President that year, so that was, that was a really bad year too. But thank you for everything, and enjoy your retirement. You deserve it.
Thank you, Mr. Stelly.
Mr. Grimmion, I just want to say it's been great working with you. Appreciate your service. You know, I think I'm a pretty good listener, and you told me something tonight, you and Mr. Landry, that I will take and remember from this day forth, and that was, be brief, brother, be brief. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bean.
I think Les took my notes. One other, this won't be hard. While we're here, and tonight's all about Dick and his career and celebrating that. But of course, when you have somebody at that level retire, there's a natural question, well, who's going to fill that role? And I'm happy to say publicly tonight, and the jury strongly supporting Mr. Jared Mays, who stood up a minute ago. Jared is Assistant Director currently, has been with us two years. He has soaked up everything that Dick can teach, those tangibles and those intangibles y'all talked about. And he's ready for this. And so I just want to announce tonight, I don't think he's going to be giving any speech or anything, but he, effective Monday morning, he will be the new Director of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, and he is ready for the role, and he's excited to be here, and we're glad to have him. So congratulations, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Junior. We will continue with the agenda. One B, Appearance by Mr. Brandon Katz, Outreach Representative for the State of Louisiana, Attorney General Liz Merrell. Mr. Katz, please give us your name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening. Brandon Katz. Just changed addresses. Home address is in Baton Rouge, let's just go with that. Twelve oh five Charlo, right by LSU. So as President Barti said, my name is Brandon Katz. I'm Outreach Representative for Attorney General Liz Merrell. I had the long speech, but we'll keep it brief. I will be serving as y'all's liaison between y'all and the office. Y'all have my card, as well as some information from our office. If y'all need anything, we're always here. The General is excited to be leading the state in her position. And if y'all don't mind, I would like to ask Ms. Robbie Dyer with the Governor's Office to step up with me real quick.
Hi, I'm Robbie Dyer, Regional Director of Rural Development for Imperial Calquashu. And on behalf of Governor Landry and myself, we would like to offer condolences for Police Juror Tremonti. I know that he was special in the community and as a member of your jury.
And I would like to offer the same on behalf of myself and the General. And he's gone now, but we would also like to offer happy retirement to Mr. Grimmion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all, if ever need anything, give us a call.
Appreciate it, thank you, sir. Item two, Hold a Public Hearing at 5:30 PM as a result of a Notice of Intention published in accordance with Louisiana law for the purpose of hearing comments, suggestions, or protests concerning the proposed abolition of Recreation District Number One of Ward Eight of Calquashu Parish, Louisiana, and further adopt an ordinance repealing Ordinance Number Thirty-three fifteen, which reaffirm the creation of said district. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? If not, can I get a motion? Motion. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item three, Hold a Public Hearing at 5:45, ordering said owners to show cause as to why the structures on said properties should not be condemned. Three A, Thirty-seven hundred Luke Powers Road, Lake Charles. Is there anyone here to speak on item three A?
Second.
Not, we have a motion by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item three B, Thirty-three Highway Thirty-fifty-nine, Lake Charles.
Move on three B.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Anybody here to speak on that item? We have a motion again by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three C, Two oh one Catalina Street, Lake Charles. Anyone here to speak on three C? We have a motion by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three D, Twenty-three, Two fifty-seven Pine Hill Cemetery Road and Highway. Anyone here to speak on three D? We have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any, any objection? Motion carries. Three E, Fifty-one, Sixty-eight LA Little Road in Carles. Anyone here to speak on three E? We have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Andropon. Any discussion?
Are you sure, Mr. Barris?
Say what?
Are you, are you sure?
One hundo.
Any objection?
I didn't want to jump, just jump to it. I wanted to make sure you were good with this.
Motion carries. Three F, Sixty-three, Fifty-nine West Miles Lane in Carles.
Move to condemn.
Anyone here to speak on three F? We have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Gwynn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three G, Fifty-one oh three West Highway Ninety in Vinton. Anyone here to speak on three G?
Move to condemn. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Burley. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three H, Thirteen ninety-five Matthew Drive in Moss Bluff.
Second.
Anyone here to speak on three H? We have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Gwynn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three I, Four forty-nine Bruce Circle, Moss Bluff. Anyone here to speak on three I? We have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Three J, Forty-one nineteen Perkins Avenue in Moss Bluff. Anyone here to speak on three J? We have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Mr. Crane.
Just a point of clarification on all of these bullets. We're recommending that they be removed in thirty days.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Four A, Adopt Resolutions Approving Permanent Public Facility Servitude Agreements for the East Calquashu Consolidated Waterworks District. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Four B,
Move on four B.
Adopt a Resolution Approving a Sell and Purchase of Property Agreement for the East Calquashu Parish Consolidated Waterworks Project. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Four C, Adopt a Resolution Approving an Agreement Between the Police Jury and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to Provide for Expediated Processing of Permit Applications. We have a motion by Mr. Burley, and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Five A, Approve the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Police Jury dated April fourth, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion by Mr. Andropon, and a second by Mr. Barris. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Five B, Adopt a Resolution Approving the Following Items Related to Each District's Interest in Potential Litigation Involving Firefighting Foam Products. That would be A, Authorizing Samuel B. Gabb, General Counsel, to the Police Jury to Contract With and Engage Legal Representation for Said Potential Litigation, and B, Requesting Approval by the Louisiana Office of Attorney General with Reference to This Matter. We have a motion on all bullets by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Stelly. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Five C,
No move.
Adopt a Resolution Approving the Submittal of a Proposal to the Louisiana High School Athletic Association to Host the Twenty-twenty-five and Twenty-twenty-six State Basketball Tournament at Burton Coliseum Complex. We have a motion by Mr. Landry, and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Six A, Approve Applications for Liquor and Beer Permits. Staff recommends one new permit be approved. We have a motion by Mr. Barris, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Six B, Adopt Ordinances Associated with the Adjudicated Property Sale Conducted on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. We have a motion by Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Six C,
Move on six C.
Adopt a Resolution Accepting Christine's Terrorist Subdivision in Ward Eight. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on seven A.
Seven A, Approve Payments of All Current Invoices. We have a motion by Mr. Andropon, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Seven B, Action on Bids for One X-Ray Machine. Staff recommends the low bid of Wayne LeBlu and Associates, Inc. in the amount of forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Gwynn, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Yes, sir, Mr. Landry.
Y'all need to buy, do a two-for-one or some deal to see if they give you another discount. You need to put one right next door in that, in that health connection. That'd probably save you a lot of money, I can tell you. You sending people out for x-rays all over the place, and gosh knows what they charging you for. That isn't that much. I mean, forty-two thousand dollars, I bet you'd save that in a year.
We're always looking at ideas, Mr. Landry, I promise you. This one's going to be more expensive than the ones you're talking about.
Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Seven C,
Move on seven C.
Action on Bids for One Refurbished Computer Tomography Machine. Staff recommends the low bid of Wayne LeBlu and Associates in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, eighty-five dollars be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries.
Move on seven D.
Seven D, Adopt a Resolution on Proposals Backflow Preventer Inspection and Maintenance Services. After Review of the Proposal, Staff Recommends Ploche Plumbing and Piping, Inc. be awarded the contract. We have a motion by Mr. Barris, Mr. Burley, I'm sorry, and a second by Ms. Eason. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Seven E, Action on Bids for One Twenty-twenty-four Anua Tandem Dump Truck. Staff recommends the bid of Martin Automotive Group in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Gwynn. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Seven F, Action on Bids for One Twenty-twenty-four Anua Three Quarter Ton Extended Cab Long Wheel Base Pickup Truck. Staff recommends the bid of Mike Willis Ford LLC in the amount of forty-six thousand, one hundred dollars be accepted. Mr. Barris.
Let the record reflect my recusal on this item.
Let the records be reflected. Mr. Barris recuses himself on this item. We have a motion by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Seven G, Adopt a Resolution Accepting the Mallard Junction Office Building Hurricane Repair Project as substantially complete. We have a motion by Mr. Stelly, and a second by Mr. Markentale. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Eight A, Community Center and Playground District Number One, Ward Six. To appoint Mr. to defer for thirty days, is that your motion? We have a motion by Mr. Markentale, and a second by Mr. Gwynn to defer for thirty days. Any other discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. The next item is Board Advised Items, followed by Advised Items. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.